All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, its strength, one nation, united, invincible, with due justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Bellamy.
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
Are there any announcements?
I believe there's, I have one announcement. A public meeting of the Rugby Avenue McIntyre Park Trail Project on Tuesday, June 25th, at 6:30 PM in the Friends Meeting House at 1104 Forest Street to discuss design options, project timeline, and gather input on the Rugby Avenue Shared Use Path Project connecting Rose Hill Neighborhood with McIntyre Park and the 250 bypass trail. For more information, contact Chris Genzick, Park and Trail Planner, 434-970-3656, or genzik, G-E-N-S-I-C, at charlottesville.org.
Are there any other announcements?
The four-miler training has started. We have a couple more spots. We have 70 people signed up, so we're going to cap it at 75. But if you are interested or know someone who may be interested in doing the 12-week training and then running the race with us on August 31st, then ask them, you know, to send an email to getfitseville@gmail.
I have an announcement. I'm not going to announce that, Mayor Walker. You're funny. What announcement? Thank you for the reminder, Mayor Walker. Next Saturday, June 29th, we go to, we'll have the Run These Streets Four-Miler, in which we start at the African-American Heritage Center promptly at 8:00 AM. We will run four miles through traditional African-American neighborhoods and landmarks. We're looking at capping at 125. Right now, we're at 112, so we have 13 slots available. There will be some space for people to sign up on-site. All participants will receive a tee-shirt, a medal, and we're looking forward to everyone joining us. So, training is every Sunday, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 6:00 AM, 6:30 AM at the Jefferson School. It's a walk-run. It's not a race, so again, please feel free to join us.
All right. All right, Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please?
Oh, and I wanted to make a motion about moving two items from the main agenda to the consent, and that was item four, which is Part A, 219 City Climate Protection Program, Program Support Grant with LEAP for $104,928, first of one reading, and B, Authorization for City Manager to Sign the Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the local Energy Alliance Program, LEAP, for grant funds to support the climate protection program and promote energy performance improvements, first of one reading. This is typically done annually, and it's typically on the consent agenda. If the mayor and another counselor would be in support of that, I would like to make that motion. Do you have any concerns, Mayor Walker? So I guess, can Kina then read it as part of the consent, or what do you want me to?
Yes, if we have two counselors and the mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Consent Agenda 1A, minutes, May 14, May 20, May 22nd, June 3rd, 2019, special meetings. B, appropriation, appropriation of human services balance for FY 2019 expenses, $400,000, second of two readings. C, appropriation, Highway Safety Improvement Program, appropriation of funds for pedestrian connections within Hillcrest-Birdwood Neighborhood, $708,932, first of two readings. D, appropriation, Virginia Department of Education Special Nutrition Program, Summer Food Service Program, $100,000, first of two readings. E, resolution, transfer of fiscal year 2020 City of Promise Funds to Ready Kids, $81,837, second of two readings. F, resolution, first amended grant agreement, Charlottesville Supplemental Rental Assistance Program, CEASRAP, first of one reading. G, resolution, accepting Burnett Commons Development Phase II, The Woods, into the city street system for maintenance, first of one reading. H, resolution, accepting portion of Belmont Cottage's Lane into the city street system for maintenance, first of one reading. I, resolution, amendment to Ravanna Solid Waste Authority, RSWA McIntyre Recycling Center Agreement, first of one reading. J, ordinance, utility rate report fiscal year 2020, second of two readings. And we are adding Resolution 2019, City Climate Protection Program, Program Support Grant with LEAP, $104,000, $104,920, first of one reading. B, authorization for city manager to sign Memorandum of Understanding between the city and the local Energy Alliance Program, LEAP, for grant funds to support the climate protection program and promote energy performance improvements, first of one reading.
And Mr. Blair, I do have two questions about F. Can I ask them now, or pull it, vote, and then ask the questions on F? I'm sorry I didn't get that in ahead of time.
I thought we'd try to take the questions now, unless you do want to pull that for a separate vote.
Okay. So just for Dr. Richardson, there were two parts in the agreement that I would like for us to just maybe, if we could modify, to, just in the itemized quarterly reports, if we can make sure that it's clear whether these are city or county. It says unit address, but just if we can make it clear that whether it's a city or county property. And then there was annual, it said that the report could be once every 24 months, and I thought that we should at least get an update, at least annually, on the, on the, on the status of the applicant, instead of once every 24 months. Do y'all have any?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Can we have, if you want to make a motion to amend the agreement that way?
Okay.
And if that's accepted, then it would just be part of the consent agenda?
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion to amend the agreement to include, you know, clearly include whether the, under the itemized quarterly reports, whether it's a county or city address, and in the, and then make sure that there's an annual report on each, each family receiving funding, instead of the 24 months. Is there a second?
Second. I'm in favor of that. If we're, a quick poll, I mean, do you want us to go ahead and vote on that?
Right, I have to vote on the amendment.
Okay. Please vote.
Okay.
On the amendment? All right.
And then I'll move, re-adopt the consent agenda with this amendment and the two items that we've added.
Second.
All right. And please vote. Okay, that carries five to zero. Thank you. Next, we have the city manager's response to the community matters. Oh, sorry, Nancy. Are there any, anyone who wish to speak on items on the consent agenda? Are we supposed to do that before we vote?
Well, it doesn't change the vote. I'm just, I'm commenting on item F about the agreement on the CEASRAP. I want to say that I'm pleased to see that there was an amendment about the length of, the length of time that individuals can use to find housing, in that it went from 90 days back to 60 days to look for a city address, and extended it for one time to 120 days to look for housing either in the city or in the county. And I've heard anecdotally that a lot of people don't make that first 90-day cutoff to find housing in the city, and I think with the four-month period of time now, that it will give them a lot more time to maybe find something in the county and the city. And also, I didn't have time to talk with, or catch up with CRHA to find out if the vouchers for 15 homeless people that was stipulated in the original agreement had been filled, and if there was an internal mechanism for communication to get that information to T-JAC, because as we work towards functional zero in homelessness, it's important, as we create a by-name list of those folks who are challenged by homelessness, that we keep up to date with those folks who have been fortunate enough through that particular stipulation to find housing. And there may be one, but I just read the agenda too late to really make a phone call, but if there isn't, if those who are involved with the agreement make sure that information is passed on to T-JAC to help keep tabs on who is and who isn't experiencing homelessness. Thank you.
So I assume that there would be a referral process? Is that not the case? Dr. Bellamy, do you know?
There's no set process in place. I'm just, I'm literally trying to think about it now as well, but I don't think that there's a set process.
Okay. Okay, so we'll check on that. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak on any other item on the consent agenda? Okay. Now, we're at the city manager's response to the community matters from the June 3rd meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and the public. The first one with the comments that was made was pertaining to the right-hand turn to Fifth Street Station. We're going to stripe a dash turn guideline and also put up a no-turn-on-red sign. We're also working with the city engineer to make sure that we are basically improving that lane in order to prevent any accidents or folks actually continuing on without understanding that it is a turn lane and not impact other cars to the left of that right-hand lane. Moving on, Ms. Khan came last week to request that we change our bathrooms to gender-neutral restrooms or all-gender restrooms, the signage. Well, we found that we had approximately 40 locations throughout the city that were considered to be single stalls. Out of those 40, four of those locations were basically for all genders. The remaining 36 restroom signs will need to be replaced in order to make them gender-neutral, and we're still working on trying to get pricing for those signage changes. So once we have solidified the cost for changing out those signs, we'll get back to the council and provide you with the cost for that. Moving on, the last item was from Ms. Hudson pertaining to cleaning behind our public works facility that backs up to the West Haven community. Had our guys go out and clean that area and then cut back some of the brush, so we'll try to maintain that better within our community. I'm going to actually ride with Ms. Hudson to see other locations within the area that she had mentioned pertaining to having litter, overgrown brush in that particular area of the community. So we will be looking into that and then trying to maintain regular maintenance in that particular area. And that concludes my presentation, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, Dr. Richardson's presentation reminded me of something that came in. We had received an email from a person that was a visitor to the city and talked, and the email was pretty distraught about the transfer, the bus transfer station, and how it was really pretty filthy, and lots of litter, cigarette butts, and just overall filthy area.
Yes, we actually sent a email over to them to keep a better eye on that. We also had parks go down and cut the overgrown grass at the station. We'll maintain better maintenance on that, keep an eye on that.
Thank you.
Apologize again for those who utilized that facility, but we'll make sure that it's maintained from this point forward, and as always, just like the emails came in, please provide us with that information, because a lot of times, you know, we may miss things, but we need the community's input and involvement to inform us of those areas that we do miss, and we'll take care of it.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Community Matters. First up, we have Walt Heinecke.
Evening.
Good evening.
Members of council, Mr. Richardson. I'd like to talk about the A-B-R-T process a little bit, but before that I do that, I want to say that I totally support the idea of moving the Sacagawea statue off and putting it somewhere else. We can do better. We can have statues that represent women of different ethnicities that support ideas about moving us in the direction of passing an ERA amendment in town. The second thing I'd like to say is I support the mayor's idea of nixing the Thomas Jefferson holiday and replacing that holiday with the Liberation Day. I think, again, we can do better. Maybe we only have one day off for city employees instead of two, but at least I think it's moving in the direct direction that shows that the council would be listening to the tenor and the climate of the community and how things have changed since, since 2017. So, on to the A-B-R-T. Thanks for the opportunity, for ability to weigh in on the A-B-R-T reform. I think it's, again, as I've said before, I think it's one of the, it could be one of the key focuses of your equity initiative post-Summer of Hate in 2017, indicating that you've listened, you've considered, and you're making significant changes in this community. I think it could be one of the top equity initiatives that you accomplish with this, this council's work this year. I think the focus on the perspective of nonprofit clients is really, really important. Keeping the focus on the, on the perspectives of those clients that are served by nonprofits is crucial, and I think you're getting there in this draft. I think you could include the city services as well. If you're going to look at nonprofits, why not look at the way the city delivers services as well, from the same perspective? I thought the Measurements and Solutions Group mission that you have in the draft today looks pretty good. It's solid, except for there needs to be more emphasis on nonprofit clients, and I sent you an email about that. I'm not sure what the plan for, is for this August through October, for the process from August to October. It's not clear from the draft about what's going to happen. Other than the draft says, "For fiscal 2021, process only, request or allow the nonprofits to identify specific criteria, solutions, and measurements or metrics." If we do that, we're just doing more of the same. It's sort of like, we're just going to keep doing what we've been doing in the past. So I'm really not sure, I think that's problematic, and I'm not sure how we're going to evolve the same dynamic to prevent the same dynamic from functioning, unless, why not let your four focus areas that you've decided on from the university influence the process this coming August? Why not tell your folks to start giving points to those applicants that are working under those four topic areas? I also think you could change the composition of the working review team right now. You don't have to wait for another two years to do that. I think that could reflect the priorities that you've identified as important, including representatives from the low-income community and clients of the nonprofit community, clients of the nonprofit work, and nonprofit leaders of color could be involved this year. And I also, just lastly, think that the facilitator for the group process should include somebody with expertise in critical race theory and multicultural evaluation. Thanks for your work so far.
Thank you. All right, we have Blair Williamson.
Not Blair. Blair was called out of town on an emergency, so she asked me to step in at her stead, counselors and Dr. Richardson. 2019 marks the 100th anniversary.
Can you introduce yourself?
Okay. 2019.
Now, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Roy Van Dorn, and I live at 1522 Rugby Avenue. 2019 marks the 100th anniversary of the Lewis and Clark Memorial. Located on the ancient three-notch road, it's the original road used by the Monocan Indians to traverse from Richmond to the Shenandoah Park, Shenandoah Valley. The memorial faces west.
Mr. Williamson, so we will have some slots, it looks like, left for signup, but sent that Blair isn't here to cede her time to you, then you can come back up during one of those times.
So she, okay.
Okay, all right. Mary Carey.
Mary Curry, City Manager. Okay, I thought we were going to have a segment on the statue. Oh, we can say it now? Okay. Well, when I was in the fourth grade 100 years ago, I was taught by Ms. Rebecca McGinnis about Lewis and Clark, North West Patches, all that stuff, Sacagawea and everything. She should have been the one standing tall. They should have been one kneeling to her, because she was the guide. She guided them through the passage so that they could get there and get back. And then they put up a statue in the Jim Crow area all around the state and the country, the 20s, to recognize a lot of white heroes that weren't really heroes, that took the credit. But I think the statue should be removed and put wherever, and replaced with a Vinegar Hill Monument, because that's, that's the place it should be, lacking the 10 feet from that ugly hotel that they built, which they took advantage of Charlottesville and then say, "Oh, well, I'll give you $500." So I think it should be, it should be gone. Then again, I got, Mr. Bellamy never did get back to me from December about to merger with the FAR and the CRHA, because right now, there's a lot of controversy going around about those two buildings that has collapsed up there in Hardy Drive that FAR should have been in on getting it fixed. And I know some friends of mine went up in the 90-degree heat last year, happened then with the cleanup day, and one of the FAR board members told me if they didn't leave, they were going to get arrested. And see, you don't do stuff like that. And I still would like to know why FAR and CRHA merged, and it's still a whole bunch of stuff going around in housing that FAR should be attending, and CRHA should be accountable for it. You got people over there still being terrorized by the interim property manager at Crescent House, and the executive director is sitting on his fists and rocking on his thumb, and he's not doing anything. And these people are being terrorized, and they have a lot of medical problems, some of them are amputees, and the city don't seem to be caring too much. But just take down the statue, place it with a Vinegar Hill Monument, and let's move on and get the history going. Thank you.
Ms. Carey?
Yes, sir. Oh, someone I want to talk.
Aye.
So, so I apologize. I haven't formally responded to you. I thought we talked about it, but that's, it's my fault. In regards to FAR and CRHA, having discussions with them, so FAR is the legal-appointed resident representative for all of our public housing sites, so that's why essentially the two entities are working together, in terms of, excuse me, the two entities being CRHA and FAR. Now, the other issues that you raised in regards to why FAR may not be speaking for X, Y, or Z, I think that's a discussion that you have to have with the FAR board, or you, feel free to come to the Housing Authority meeting. As you know, we meet the fourth, just for everybody else's information, we meet the fourth Monday of every month, right here in council chambers, at 6 o'clock, and that's really all that I can say about it. That's the information that was provided to me. FAR is the legally represented, or excuse me, the legally-appointed entity that represents our public housing residents.
Well, you know I know that.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I went through the internship program through FAR, and I also was one of the people with Joe Sakos and Ben Becker-Guardney and Colonel Waters-Wicks, the founder of FAR, back in the 80s, but I'm never mentioned. But anyway, I was on the FAR Advisory Board from 2013 to 2017, and they send me an email saying they no longer needed my services, only because one of the board members didn't like my ideas about what I was doing for the people in housing. So I know what you're trying to say, Mr. Bellamy, but it's not working, because when I was living in housing, when I moved from Lake Monarchale back to Charlottesville and was living in housing, FAR didn't stand for stuff like this. They didn't let stuff go undone. But if you're living in the house with, with somebody that's supposed to be paying the rent, you can't go against them, and that's what FAR is doing. They're living in the same house with CRHA, and they are not questioning them. I don't care if they don't like it, because when I used, I was on the advisory board at FAR, and when I used to tell them things was going on in the city and they acted upon it, things were smooth. But I wasn't getting paid, I didn't ask for any money, but the ones that were getting paid weren't doing their job. But yet, I was criticized for helping these people. Now, when FAR started acting up, it's when people called them. When residents called FAR, they can't get anybody. When they called CRHA, they get snubbed. So you tell me what FAR is supposed to be doing? They're supposed to be kicking ass, and they're not doing it. So if you got a better explanation, I'm willing to hear it. And one thing I'd like to say to you, in the last two months, if you had have been doing what you were doing in the last three years, you could be going to Richmond. Thank you.
Okay.
Anthony Lopez.
Anthony Lopez, UVA alumni, enrolled member of the Crook Creeksu Tribe. I live in Fairfax County, in Henneville, 3366 Woodburn Road. Thank you all for being here every, you know, other week, meet with the people here. It's a really great democratic exercise. And I'm here to talk about the Sacagawea Lewis and Clark Statue, and I understand that there was a letter sent to, to all of you from the Sacagawea Interpretive Cultural and Educational Center by their director, Lynn Gray. And if it's permitted, I'd like to read the letter. It's not very long, because I think it's, it's to the point of the decision that you're making. So Lynn Gray, the director, writes, "Dear Charlottesville City Council, I'm writing this letter in support of allowing the descendants of Sacagawea to provide input on the future location of the statue standing at West Main and Ridge Streets. That is on the agenda for June 17th, 2019. As the Director of the Sacagawea Interpretive Cultural and Educational Center in Idaho, I work closely with her band, Sacagawea's band, the Akadika, salmon eaters, who are recognized as part of the Shoshone Bannock Tribes located at Fort Hall, Idaho. The center provides a space to commemorate the history of the Akadika and their role in the Lewis and Clark Expedition. It is my understanding that several descendants of Sacagawea traveled to Charlottesville a number of years ago to install a plaque at the statue to better honor Sacagawea and her contributions to our nation. I know her descendants have strong feelings about how she is portrayed alongside Captains Lewis and Clark, and I urge you to consider their views before you make a decision. I realize the statue itself is historic, as it was installed in its current location about 100 years ago. You certainly did not have any control over how Sacagawea was depicted in it, but you now have the opportunity to improve upon how she is portrayed in a new location with more information about her story. To include the voices, history, and views of native people will be a step toward healing past wrongs, which is something I hope you will consider as a representative government body. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I would be happy to help in any way I can. You can contact me at her phone number and her email." So I, I urge you to consult with the relatives of Sacagawea, her tribe, her tribal historic preservation officer, and organizations like Ms. Grace, and to build something, you know, that we haven't yet had in Charlottesville, so understanding, mutual agreement, concerns with indigenous peoples in Charlottesville. Thanks.
Thank you. Nelson?
Nelson?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nelson. I live here in Charlottesville. I've only lived in Charlottesville a short time. And in trying to get ahold of my local government, I've met many roadblocks. I've been told, "Oh, they're busy. They don't have time." I've tried to get ahold of you quite a bit of time. Finally got an appointment the other day. I've asked to speak with the Chief of Police. For the last six months, I've been denied. And it seems to be that the police, like to use those famous words, it's officers' discretion on what laws they enforce. Maybe it's because there's a video out there on YouTube of four officers allowing a handicap parking to be violated. Has over 90,000 hits. Trust me, the handicap community is not too happy. But yet, the Chief of Police does not want to hear from me. Curious in why that is. They pick and choose who they want to write tickets to. Witnessed firsthand a violation the other night. Police came, rode by, no ticket. But yet, I got a ticket, and I was the victim. And yet, the officer and the sergeant lied to the magistrate. I was unable to press charges against the limousine driver who put his vehicle in reverse and headed towards me and my two service animals. That is the way the police are handling matters. Now, the police, all of a sudden, they're running my license plate 'cause they want to know who this person is. They have no right to run my license plate. I've done nothing wrong. But now, I'm facing a court date because police officers are lying. They don't want to do anything. Chief of Police doesn't want to do anything. What's the deal with that? 90,000 views as of today. Because you have a company parking in a handicap parking place, and the disabled community, quite frankly, are ticked off. Nobody cares about the disabled. As a matter of fact, just this last weekend, this last, was it, the last council meeting, you guys had a, what you call it, a dirt bike parked in handicap right over here, right outside your own building. You guys had a group here, last council, with gun violence. You've got a thing. No bikes, you know, walk your wheels on the mall. There's a small white car driving down the mall. That group of people are yelling, "Get the kids, get the kids." Because you've got a white car driving down the mall. What do the police say? "We didn't see it. We can't do anything." But yet, there's video to prove this happened.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Mark Cadet? All right. Paul Long?
My name is Paul Long. I live at 100 Ridge Street here in the city. And I told the clerk that I wanted to speak about public transportation. But it's really too big of a topic to make any comments in three minutes. What I would like to give the City Council and Dr. Richardson is a copy of an article which was recently published that goes into great detail about why we need to improve the public transit system in the city and does a much better job than I could have in any kind of public comments. So if Mr. Bellamy can distribute that to City Council and Dr. Richardson, I think it would make a very good background reading as we try to deal with this issue. I want to thank the City Council for the time and hope everybody has a nice night.
Thank you. Myra Anderson?
I'm Harold Fowey.
Good afternoon, Council, Dr. Richardson, Dr. Buckley, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm here tonight to talk about the CRB. The People's Coalition, as you know, been pushing for a strong CRB. And the People's Coalition wants to know and hope that council, this council, don't bury the bylaws and not do nothing and wait for the next council. Because we don't know what's gonna happen. And so I have questions. My first question is, what's the council plan going forward regarding the CRB bylaws? What's the council plan to do after the bylaws are submitted? When will the draft bylaws be voted on? Will there be a public hearing? How would council get community feedback? Could there be a community forum with the Jefferson School and the CRB or council regarding the bylaws? And if there's like a push for extra time, could council extend the initial CRB extra time to finish what they need to do? Finally, Pittsburgh has one of the strongest CRBs. And during Dr. Chief Brackney time there, that's when the CRB was thriving, or still thriving. But unlike Charlottesville CRB, the Pittsburgh CRB had investigative and subpoena power, which the Charlottesville would not have. So I'm hoping that council, along with Chief Brackney, will support what's going forward. But my question is, those questions, what's gonna happen? When are you gonna vote on it? And will people have opportunity to comment about the CRB? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kay Slaughter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Counselors and Mr. City Manager. At Friday's Juneteenth celebration, the late Raymond Bell was one of the community elders. Oh, I forgot to say, I live in the city, Kay Slaughter. Short 18th street. Raymond Bell was one of the community elders who was honored. He's also one of the 37 bridge builders who's been recognized for the bridges he built across racial and economic differences in this community. Ray was the first African-American to serve on the city school board and was appointed at a critical time as the schools were desegregating. He's memorialized with others on the Drury Brown Bridge with the intent to make, to invoke curiosity and to inspire us. And I'd like to also mention that I just learned tonight that Paul Gaston, another of the bridge builders, passed away on Friday. And he also was a critical person. He with Floyd Johnson led the sit-ins here in Charlottesville. But this only monument, the bridge to local heroes, needs council's help to push beyond its tokenism to become a true monument that's worthy of Drury Brown and the other bridge builders, with prominent signage, lamppost banners, and public art announcing it is a special place. I was surprised to discover staff recommendation of the $75,000 appropriation for another Blue Ribbon Commission to consider the future of the Sacagawea statue and yet, nothing about the bridge on West Main Street. $75,000 could go a long way toward meeting the modest needs to make the bridge a true monument. Second, on the issue of the statue, I have written council and co-authored a daily progress op-ed favoring its retention and pointing out its historic, cultural, and artistic merit. And thus, I respectfully differ from the other speakers, including Mr. Lopez, who's also written an op-ed. I view Sacagawea engaging in her task of tracking to find the way across the west and/or gathering roots and herbs for consumption, multitasking, like most women, while she's caring for a baby which she had gave birth to on the trip. Sacagawea ironically was the symbol for the Women's Suffrage Movement from 1895 to 1920, when the amendment was passed. But I want to focus the rest of my time on the public process by which we can consider the merits of retaining or removing the statue. 10 years ago, under the leadership of the Historic Resources Commission and Mayor Dave Norris, an event brought together a group of Shoshone and Monocan peoples and UVA students in Charlottesville for a ceremony. This was a creative process involving 100 people. Thus, I urge you to consider a different process for public input. A community walk at the site, followed by a workshop, perhaps two workshops and a public hearing, not a $75,000 commission with a whole separate infrastructure. And I also request that the Drury Brown Bridge, as per recommendation of the last Blue Ribbon Commission, be treated as a monument and steps taken with all deliberate speed to accomplish this. Thank you.
And I have a few comments, but we're gonna get to that item number three, so there's no need to say it more than once. But, all right, next we have John Hall.
I'm John Edward Hall of Frye's Spring. I have an economical approach to the affordable housing crisis for the homeless in Port who are without shelter in Charlottesville. I propose an experiment in one or two selected parks with bathroom facilities established, such as McIntyre Park and perhaps another. Shower facilities need to be added by City Council directive. The program is to allow overnight camping in the designated parks between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM with camp tents, air mattresses, inflation canisters, and sleeping bags in a city truck, delivered by 7:30 PM and picked up at 6:30 AM with parking and storage in the city yard during the day. Homeless campers can get used to the schedule and police supervision can be provided. Food can be provided by food mobiles and drinking water coolers added to the new shower facility areas as the program gains popularity. Chapter 18 of the Parks and Recreation Section of the Charlottesville Virginia Code of Ordinances will have to be changed to allow this experiment. I'm willing to rewrite it if the council wishes to give my proposed experiment a try. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Payne?
Good evening.
Good evening. Michael Payne, resident of Belmont. Just wanted to speak briefly about an issue that may seem small and I'm sure will not dominate the headlines, but I still think has an impact on the community. And that's the recent changes to the city's parking garages. I saw there was a press release sent out about the improvements. I checked out the improvements today and had a giant machine with a dystopian robot voice yell at me to please take my ticket. And I just wanted to voice, you know, there's a lot of members of the community who do not view automating away human engagement as an improvement. But more importantly than that, the concern that, as has happened at UVA and a lot of other places, which have seen attendance replaced with automated machines, that this will eventually result in the parking lot attendants being fired. I know that, you know, the plan now is to have them be ambassadors of the new machines. But the concern is that, long-term, their positions may go. And again, just wanted to give voice, you know, that there are community members who are concerned about how we're going to treat the workers who we see every week who actually make the city run and the long-term impact they'll be with this automation coming. So again, I know it won't make the headlines, but just wanted to give voice to that concern.
Thank you. Don Gathers?
Good evening. The absolute last thing that I ever wanted to do again in life was stand before you all and talk about statues. And yet, here we are. Before we, I understand we planned to empanel another Blue Ribbon Commission. And my recommendation to you simply would be, don't. Before we allocate or attribute any money or any funding to any other commission dealing with this issue, I would recommend that you spend some time in conversation in depth with some of the Shoshone tribe, that you would speak with the Monicans. And then, and only then, if you move forward with empaneling a commission, that you make sure that it is heavily populated with Native American people. Their voices need to and deserve to be heard. So please, take that into consideration. And I agree, the statue should be moved. But just as I said, of the Lee and Jackson statue, they should be moved to one centralized location. Put them all in one park. If you're going to move it 20 feet, just keep the truck rolling. Keep it going. To a designation out of the immediate downtown area where they don't at all belong. Put it somewhere where people, I'm not saying destroy it. I'm not saying put it out of the city somewhere. Put it somewhere where people who still want to revere it can still do so. And I want to echo Mr. Heinecke and thank you, Mayor Walker, for your foresight and your vision. And it's time that we do go ahead and have the in-depth and tough conversations about Mr. Jefferson. Yes, indeed, he was the third president. Yes, they say he did author the Declaration of Independence. Yes, he had his slaves to build Monticello and UVA. But we can't overlook or continue to overlook the fact that he was indeed a slaveholder. He was indeed a racist. He was indeed a rapist. And we don't need to continue to glamorize and glorify individuals of that ilk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak?
Thank you. Charles Knight, K9GHT, 1243 Cedars Court, Charlottesville. I don't have a statement prepared. I just am here on the principle that for bad ideas to proceed, good people do nothing. And so I would like to say I think Jefferson's birthday should be left alone and urge all counselors to vote in that direction. And then, if I may, I have a question. I'm not clear on when that vote would be or how that proceeds from tonight.
We'll be discussing it next.
I'm sorry?
It's the next item on the agenda.
And a vote will be taken?
We'll be discussing it.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Rosie Parker, City. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Richardson. Because you've been here, at that time, you was here for two weeks. And you did just what I asked, been asking City Council for three years. And I want to applaud you on that. Thank you so much. And I'll see you tomorrow.
Sina McGill, Anderson Street. Very, very quickly, thank you so much for painting the yellow lines on 8th and Preston. So I have already noticed, I have not been flipped off once by somebody making an illegal U-turn. Since they have been painted, I am truly grateful. I am not, the parking, I'm already seeing traffic- I am not, the parking, I'm already seeing traffic patterns easing up a little bit. So thank you very much. And I would officially like to put out there to thank you Officer Sykes, who stayed on an issue I had about a vehicle a bit abandoned beside my house. It took a number of months. It was because the ground was very soft with all the rain before it could get removed, but he stayed on it. It was about a six-month process that he kept checking back, and I just wanted to officially thank him for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm David Rhodes, county resident. About the Jefferson thing, we all know about Jefferson. But I thought you might be interested in a story about Liberation Day. This is a account of a former Alamo County Commonwealth attorney about his childhood on so-called Liberation Day when the Union troops came to town. I am not, as a general rule, malicious or unforgiving, but to my dying day, I shall hate and despise the miserable wretch that caught hold of my mother. I think I would know his brutal, mean face today. I would like to kill him even now, 42 years after the event, and would like to do it slowly and with deliberation. That is from a personal memoir of Richard T.W. Duke, a former Alamo Commonwealth attorney. So if white women were treated like that on Liberation Day, I shudder to think how some black women must have been treated. So like I said, we all know about Jefferson, but we, you know, we could take a closer look at so-called Liberation Day. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Nancy, have you? Oh, you were.
I was, yeah. Thank you for this opportunity, Nancy Carpenter, city resident. I also want to urge that the city council pass a very strong CRB. I'm sorry that they don't have investigative powers after what I saw happened in Phoenix over the weekend to a pregnant mother and a one-year-old child for a stupid imported plastic doll. I can see now why this community should have a strong one because all they're getting right now is an apology from their city mayor. "Oh, I'm sorry, the police almost shot you and your one-year-old child over a purported, you know, store theft." I mean, for God's sakes, how many, for God's sake. So please do that. Number two, I also support moving the Sacagawea statue totally out of downtown. Biscuit Run would be a good option, I think, for it to be. Number one, it might be 100 years since the 19th Amendment was passed, but it didn't pass for indigenous women, and it certainly didn't pass for black women in 1919. So to use that as a reason to keep the statue, I think, is a little, I don't know, species. And the third thing is, no, there is no other third thing. Those two things. Thank you.
I didn't call you, but anyone else would like to speak?
Yeah, the man do me, uh, I got a couple things I want to cover tonight. Tanisha Hudson. The first thing, Mooney's in here. Give me and Mooney a round of applause. Listen, let me tell y'all something about him. He answer my calls 24/7, okay? So my uncle is in hospice right now on his last breath. That's why I'm late. I just left the hospital from seeing him. We had a cookout yesterday, and we did a raffle to raise money for him. And the police showed up at a black cookout. Now, I don't know about everybody in this room, but the summertime and nice weather and holidays, with yesterday being Father's Day and him being a father, we cook out naturally in the summertime. And so for the police to just pop up and say, before the sun went down, this was before the sun went down, that there was a noise ordinance, that bothers me because we have a noise ordinance in Belmont. We have a noise ordinance on 10th Street at the new bar that's literally right across from West Haven. We have a noise ordinance during Tom Tom Festival every year. We have a noise ordinance during the Friday after five, every Friday. And we have a noise ordinance on 14th Street when the students here, all year long. So I think that the noise ordinance probably should be revisited because back in the day, the parks used to be open here till midnight. And now y'all done shut the parks down. The second thing I want to cover is the BCBA dance team was given permission from Crow, I believe, either Smith or Crow, to utilize a space. And now they're saying, oh, it's straightening? Oh, all right, all right, all right. Because you know, I was ready to go in.
No. It's straight.
The last thing I want to talk about, because, see, we sometimes get carried away and don't pay attention to certain stuff. I want to take y'all back to when everybody pulled city councils' credit card spending and how the main focus was put on two black people, Wes and Nakaya, right? And then I just saw an article on Paige Rice with equipment not being turned in. Let me tell y'all something, because I say this all the time, and it really upsets me. Stop thinking that white women do stuff and we gotta, we gotta allow the media to sweep it a certain way. Because when the people black, we are comfortable with letting black people get dragged in the city, and I'm sick of it. Like, I'm sick of it. Like, white people do just as much, if not worse, but we just, since they control the narrative, that's the power of supremacy, they control the narrative of the media, they control the narrative of the story. And I'm talking to y'all people up there in the media place too, because y'all part responsible for this, the way y'all write these stories and the way y'all want to report it. Because when that article came out about spending, although they mentioned everybody, Mike Uber, Wes going to Hooters, Nakaya buying shoes for a race that the community is involved with, they made a big deal out of that. And this, the way that they did this story on Paige, whether she turned the equipment back in or not turned the equipment back in or how, whatever have you, if she was black, y'all would have been talking about that tonight up on this council podium. But because she not black, it's like everybody want to just sweep it up under the rug. But see, I know, I just know how things work. It's the reason why she's not here. What that reason is, whether y'all want to discuss it or not, you know, clearly, the media tried to portray it in a different way. We have to get away from that. I still don't really think that we learned our lesson from August the 12th. I think that race is a huge issue still in Charlottesville, and the world is watching us. And unless we really start to put focus on the what-ifs, and I told this to Mooney last night, the way they popped up at that cookout. They don't do that, they don't do that to nobody in Belmont, at all, period. But they pop up at a, at a black person's cookout. We gotta get away from picking and choosing when we want to police and when we want to have the law being followed. Like, let's focus on that, please. Thank you.
All right. So we will break for 10 minutes. Oh, was there any comments? And I hope everyone is going to stay for our next, because I do have some comments, but I don't have enough energy but to make them one time. But I do have, and hopefully we'll have a discussion, a pretty vibrant one. Thank you.